To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, I'll call this man West Bank City Council to order roll call.
Crowder? Raleigh?
Here.
Hightmeier? Lees?
Here.
Waterman?
Here.
We need to perfect or approve the agenda. So move.
Support.
Motion with support. Any discussion? Roll call.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve is presented.
Support.
Motion with support to approve consent agenda items one through eleven, which are the minutes from regular city council meeting on April third, two thousand nineteen. Approved the renewal of the urban chicken permit for seven oh three West Agency Road for a one-year term. Approved payment to Moyn County IT Department for the city's share joint law enforcement systems. Approved NFPA training for Fire Chief Ryan. Approved payment to Tri-City Blacktop. Approved payment to J and M Displays. Approved payment to Moyn County Regional Waste Commission. Approved payment to Burlington Water Works. Approved payment to Diamond Vogel. Approved payment to Three E Electrical Engineering Equipment. And approved the claims list as presented in the amount of hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-three cents. Any discussion? Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowder?
Here.
Anne?
Here and yes. Sorry.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Motion carried. Staff reports. Dan?
Um, just want to remind you that we're a table sponsor for the small business appreciation breakfast. That's gonna be held Friday, May tenth, seven AM, Comfort Suites. I need to RSVP. We have four complimentary tickets. I need to RSVP by Friday, May third, so let me know if you want to go to that.
Just a couple of things. The repair's been made at the swimming pool. The painting contractor will be in tomorrow to wash down the pool and they'll be painting on Friday and Saturday. Um, probably have to finish up Monday or Tuesday next week, but that's on schedule. Um, and the project on Mount Pleasant Street is, is moving along pretty quickly. Um, Hickie Contracting has, has got Winter Street tore out and they'll probably be tearing out Ballard possibly yet this week and they'll just keep working their way to the west, getting all the intersections replaced, um, pouring around the manholes and also the water valves and, and they're doing a, a very good job and, and making things happen pretty quickly. So, that's all I have.
Anybody have anything for Randy?
Randy, did you get anybody lined up for the, uh, lights at the tack lane part?
Yes. They were waiting on a couple of things. There was, they could do some of the po- uh, redo some of the lights, but I told them just wait till all the parts came in. So it's, that should be happening relatively quickly too, soon as everything comes in.
Thank you.
Are they, are they planning on doing anything with that, like that little drive that's down there on Mount Pleasant Street? It used to be Bean Blossoms Rental House, I think.
Uh, on driveways, no.
I, I didn't think it looked bad anyway, but, uh, I just wondered if that was gonna get done or, cause it, you know, you get out onto Mount Pleasant.
Right.
I knew they were doing the streets and the alley approaches.
Well, they're not even doing the alleys. It's, it's just the streets.
The streets?
Yes. And also there's probably gonna be a change order. I just thought of this. There, the storm sewer that runs from Broadway down to Swan, um, they're gonna TV that. Part of that we've replaced over the years, but they thought that they should go ahead and TV it and if it still has some of that clay tile in there, they may go ahead and replace that now, which makes sense while they have the concrete torn out there. So, just a heads up that you might see a change order on that in the future.
But I appreciate Hickie doing that and I appreciate the equipment that he's using.
Oh yeah. Yep, they're moving along really well.
Alrighty. Anyone, do you have anything for Randy?
A ton of stuff, but I'll let it go.
That's later on. Jess?
Uh, we had tabletop exercise today down at Burlington Police Department. On June eleventh, we're planning, uh, small-scale exercise for an active shooter in Des Moines County here at one of the buildings. We're still finalizing on that, but we'll probably send a few guys to that training just so they can, uh, work on the active shooter programs that we have here at West Burlington. It'll be a countywide, um, all agencies involved with that. Uh, so once I find a little bit more out, I'll keep you updated, but it sounds like it's gonna be on Tuesday, June eleventh. And we're still working on the RagBri route and it sounds like it's about finalized. So, once again, once we hear that information, I'll pass that on to you guys and let you know.
Do you know that exact route yet?
About ninety-nine percent sure yes. It'll be coming in Highway four oh six, out behind GRMC. Um, we'll go through the GRMC parking lot by, uh, the hospice house, Klein Unit, and then going out on the main drive, out onto South Gear, and then they'll head south on South Gear to West Avenue. We're gonna keep all the exits and entrances open on Agency Street, like the emergency room entrance and the staff parking, all that on the north side of the GRMC is gonna stay open, so.
Hospital's doing so, I mean, uh, SEC is doing some, something though, aren't they?
They are having, uh, camp, campsite. They're expecting about seven hundred and fifty to a thousand campers out there and they'll be camping around the new Science Hall Building is where their campground's gonna be set up at, keeping it away from the fair.
Yeah, cause the fair's going on.
Yes.
That's, yeah. I was gonna say it's during the fair, but, and the only reason I ask is, cause I was just talking to Jay Johnson about that, who rides in RagBri.
Yes.
Him and I was trying to figure out how that was gonna work through West Burlington.
Yeah, I'll get with, uh, Randy's guys and, uh, we're gonna set up cones. We're gonna have one-way traffic through there. It's gonna be, um, public, publicized, heavily showing the route and one-way traffic in and out of there and it's, it, I think it's gonna work out pretty good, the route that they have set up. I know back in two thousand and six, I think, or whenever RagBri come through Burlington last time and ended, we had quite the mess out there because that was the same route they come in then was down four oh six, down Agency.
It was.
And it was, it was quite the mess, dealing with traffic, trying to get into the hospital, dealing with emergency vehicles and all that.
But this is gonna be different.
This is different because we're staying, yeah. And they're gonna leave the same route Saturday morning, go back out the same way, out west on four oh six.
And because you're the chief of police and because I'm the Fourth of July party guy, I really want them to end up down here, some of them. I'm just saying.
Well, that's July twenty.
I know, it's after the July fourth, but, just saying. It would be nice if some of them that are camping at the hospital and the college would end up downtown West Burlington.
Work on that.
Line up a band.
Say what?
Line up a band.
I was working on that this afternoon and that's all I'll say about that.
We got a stage.
You have a little problem with that. What? Because the... It's your problem. The fair has the stage rented for that day.
Yes, cause they have a band out there, plus they have the...
Nobody ran that by me. But okay, they don't have to. They've had that rented for a long time.
Worth to you to pull all the fire trucks out and use the fire station?
I'm just saying, I just...
And they're also having, uh, party on the riverfront that night.
I know, I know who's in here. I know Burlington is trying to get all these people to come downtown, being a West Burlington people.
I would agree.
Okay. Okay. I'm trying to get some of them to stay out here a little ways away from the river, then go see the river, but they need to come back out here and relax and spend their evening. Just saying.
Well, they are looking for people to host.
Would you agree with that, that that would be okay and we could?
Yeah, I think that's what, not speaking on behalf of the fair, but I know they're working really hard for that to happen too.
I know they are too. Okay, alright. So I gotta find my own stage, even though I own a stage, I gotta find my own stage?
Yes.
Okay.
I was at the, uh...
You could, you could, uh, open up the basement showers. Showers will bring RagBri people downtown. I already know that. That's one, one rea- way to get them here. I'm not sure how we get enough towels and that, you have to bring their own. No, bring their own towels, but I need a band right out here. Just saying. Anyway.
Anything else for Jess? Colin?
On the building side, um, down to four re- single residential's and then, uh, one apartment complex, six eleven West Van Wieso, have them all knocked out by Tuesday. Here's your two of them. Um, they'll all be knocked out by Tuesday, uh, so we'll be caught up on all the inspection wise and then start all over again come May first. Working the rest into the schedules. On the fire side, FDIC went really well, met with some vendors, uh, that supply our equipment and discuss some issues that we've had. And actually, like with our air packs, um, switched who repairs our air packs to another local repair center and that guy got ahold of me within five minutes and he'll be down here on Monday to take care of the issues that the other company I was working with has been delaying since November. Nothing, it's just a software, software upgrade, but at the same time, it's something that we want done and they should've done it ti- more timely. Did have some excellent classes, the guys all took, myself included. Um, one pertaining to building construction, um, and some current trends in products being used in building, uh, that can be a, a hazard towards, uh, fighting a fire in it and the community itself, something I'm, after hearing about the information, decided to keep an eye on when we have, uh, construction going up in town. Just to ensure that we limit its use here in town to keep our citizens safe. Uh, do have one thing coming up, uh, on May first, I'll have it on the council agenda. Cindy Franciscovich would like to attend the council meeting along with the State Fire Marshal's office for a presentation of, uh, the benefits check tour, um, on the state line of duty benefits, uh, asked the federal and it's still working through its process. It's about halfway through the process on those. And then, last year, GRMC held a benefit. They did a, like a health walk, uh, health fitness type thing, uh, in honor of Franco and they're doing it again this year and that's gonna be on May fourth, it's a Saturday and it'll start at nine fifteen. We're gonna supply an engine out there. Last year we took an engine out, they had to do a hose drag and, uh, we took our, uh, rescue dummy out there. Uh, no, it wasn't me. They took the drag dummy out there and they had to drag him a little bit. So, um, also on the building side, got a couple nuisances that I had filed with the city attorney. They are actually starting to make some serious progress. The sheriff's office served them the court notice paperwork and then all of a sudden, boom, we're getting some progress. So we're keeping an eye on that, monitoring it. Um, couple of residences over on West Burlington Avenue.
Okay, anything for Sean? Kelly, you got anything going on?
Um, I did want to mention that we usually have our citywide garage sale the last weekend in July, which would also be RagBri and the fair. So we talked about moving that to the last weekend in June, instead of July this year. Just for crowd control issues, it's hectic in town during that time. I think all the RagBri riders are supposed to be pretty much gone Saturday morning. I think they have a time limit that they're supposed to be gone by, but it still might be too much.
Get rid of your stuff earlier.
Yeah. And also, uh, spring cleanup is gonna be May fifteenth.
I see you had notice out and put stuff out two or three days beforehand.
I don't remember how that's...
Think that was the, what the notice said, like...
It's, I didn't even read it Hans, to be honest with you.
Well, you're not gonna be here anyway.
They can put it out a little bit ahead of time, but we like it to be...
That's cold. It's just cold.
He probably doesn't care.
I know, I know, but don't remind me.
Yeah, a couple of days, but not weeks. We don't start, they don't start coming after them for nuisances. If they put them out a couple of days ahead of time, that'd be in their best interest.
There's a TV on Swan Street if you wanna...
Working on that one. It's not big enough for my living room, but...
I don't know if it works, but yeah.
It'll all be gone anyway.
Yep.
Scrappers.
Amen.
Wow. Got a whole week to put it out.
Ninety percent of it'll be gone. Good or bad?
Okay. Rod, you got anything going on?
Well, I don't know. I got all kinds of stuff going on, but that's besides the point. Uh, the raffle tickets technically can't be sold till tomorrow, if you dot all your i's and cross all your t's. The prizes are a gun safe, which is from, and a canoe, and a Weber grill, and of course the cooler cash, which is five hundred dollars. They'll be available at City Hall, two dollars apiece. Uh, if you want to sell them for your group, club, or organization, see Katie or Kelly or Leslie and they'll set you up, uh, dollar for dollar on sales of those. So we appreciate anybody that picks those up and sells them. We're feverishly working on the Fourth of July. We're a little behind because of me, but that's okay. Uh, you'll notice earlier you approved a payment to J and M Displays for ten thousand dollars for the fireworks, which is a large amount of money for twenty-two, twenty-five minutes of fireworks. So anybody that can contribute towards that, I would appreciate. That's all I'll say.
Anything else? Rick?
You said it all.
Please? Al?
Good.
Alrighty. Anyone wishing the rest of council matters are not on the agenda tonight. Alright, go to new business. Item number one is consider accepting Public Works Director Randy Fry's retirement.
Nay.
Of the city, authorize advertising for the position. Randy's last day is gonna be, uh, twenty-fifth or the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, effective, twenty-sixth.
Yep.
Well, I think, uh, the decision you made is probably the right decision. I never worked with only the two public works directors this whole time that I've been around, so, you know. Appreciate all the stuff you have done for the city. And I wish you the best of luck in your further endeavors.
Thanks.
I don't know if Kelly actually let you do this.
You have a list for him to do at home, a honeydew?
Oh yeah, they, I haven't given it to him yet, I'm gonna wait till... You don't wanna work another month or two.
That's why.
I'm good.
At least he didn't do what I did. I called my wife while she was on vacation and told her that I didn't work anymore.
Worse than that, he called me while I was at a software training in Texas.
So...
It was worse.
That's right.
But, uh, I want somebody to make a motion to accept his resignation so I can give him a little gift on behalf of the city.
Sorry, ain't gonna do that.
Then he's not gonna get his gift.
Alright. I can give him the gift, I got that covered. Well, before I make the motion, I appreciate everything you've done, Randy, and you and I've already had that conversation, so I don't need to say anymore, but thanks a lot. So move.
I'm gonna have somebody second it.
Reluctantly support.
I got a motion with support. Any further discussion? I'll do a roll call.
Crowder?
Nay.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Lees?
Smooth move, Crowder.
Put you on the spot, dear.
Great, thanks. How much you gonna pay me, Randy?
This is really just a formality.
He's leaving one way. I know, but I'm kinda interested to see if this failed, what would happen?
Really nothing.
I know.
Aye. Waterman?
Alright, that motion carried. With that being said, I wanna present Randy with a little gift from the city of West Burlington. It's not much, but might, uh, be able to buy a few fishing bars with him.
Oh, thanks, Hans.
You're welcome. And good luck to you.
Thanks.
She taking pictures.
I guess.
Can you shake him?
I'll shake him.
Can you smile?
Well, I'm not gonna smile, cause I'm sad to see him pull this. Cause I know how old he is. And I was even younger when I did it. Anyway, so, uh, do we need, uh, give the authorization here to maybe put, uh, some feelers out and advertise for the job and see if we can, you know, if anybody's, I, I, you know, of course, anybody internally, if they wanna apply or, you know, put in a resume for it is welcome to do it, but maybe we wanna just, uh, advertise it for a mo- couple of weeks to see what's available out there, if there's anything available.
Can you put it in the league? Yeah.
Uh, be, that magazine probably wouldn't get it till the...
People watch it online though, they'll put it like in the next day online. It's, uh, that's typically what we've done with the last few department heads that we've hired as we've advertised and even though we had some internal candidates and we worked through that, we kinda have to do that for veterans' preference anyway, so...
Come on, if somebody has agreed.
So, okay, so two things. Uh, I would prefer we hire within if somebody within wants the job.
Yeah.
And you all figure they're qualified, okay?
I agree there.
Okay, thanks. And, uh, obviously then I need to also know who we're gonna appoint as acting head of Public Works that I can call like I call Randy all the time. Mike, right? Is that, Rod's your assistant?
Rod is the assistant.
However you wanna do that. But we need to decide that officially, because some of us don't wait to go through the proper channels, I'm sorry. As Randy would admit to, sometimes we just call Randy. And so you're gonna need to decide, and I don't care, who we call. There's times you're out of town or you're gone for the weekend or whatever. And we need to know who that is. Well, Rod's your assistant, so that's probably the way to go. Okay. Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Gotta call Rod.
So Rod's gonna call Rod. It's just messed up.
You know he's gonna end up calling you, Randy.
I'm probably gonna call Randy and say, if you were still here, what would you do about this? Just being honest.
Hope they don't get confused on which Rod.
Yeah, that happens occasionally.
Okay. I think if, if we got an understanding, if, uh, we could probably somehow give Mike the assistant temporarily, because he's closer by than what Rod is.
Right.
So, you know, on it, on what goes on from like seven in the morning till three o'clock, you could have, you know, Rod take care of those issues and if, if issues pop up after three o'clock, then, uh, Mike could probably handle that.
I can't speak for him, but he has stepped up in the past.
I know, and I know Mike has, but you two need to decide that, not us, and you need to tell us who we need to call if we feel necessary to call somebody.
I'm still gonna call Kelly.
The only number I got on my phone is Randy, so...
It's all I got.
Well, we'll go that way. We'll, let's, I'd like to get this done though, fairly soon.
Yes.
With all these things that are going on.
And with the Fourth of July coming, I would like to have a new public works director so I knew who I was dealing with, uh, to be honest.
I'm sure nothing will change.
I don't think so either, but if some people would decide to hire somebody from outside, it could change. So I wanna know.
Okay, with that being said, item number two is consider resolution hiring Cole Williams for seasonal labor in the Public Works Department.
Support.
Support. Which most support, is there any discussion?
Is this the young man that has worked for us before?
This is your brother.
Brother.
I didn't think the name was the same.
Yeah, Cole's gonna graduate, uh, in May.
Was the other one Chase?
Yes.
Okay, that was my confusion, I'm sorry. Okay.
Roll call?
Raleigh?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Hans, I have, um, I talked to Dan today. I have another young man that's gonna graduate, also in May, that, uh, next week I'll give Kelly a memo recommending to hire another, another young man.
Said that this morning, didn't you?
For this year?
Yeah. So that way there'll be, it, we haven't had two mo- two people seasonal for quite some time and I think, um, it'll work out a lot better to have two, especially this year when they're gonna be a little bit short anyway.
Well, we have had three.
Uh, yeah.
I mean, I'm, I remember when we had three, so... Without you here and with these being new people, that's an excellent idea.
So I'll have a memo that'll be on the agenda for the next council meeting.
Alright, item number three is to consider resolution adopting guidelines for small cell facilities. And what this amounts to is, small cell towers are popping up all over the place in right-ofways, which for some reason has gone through the FCC, FCC, and, uh, they have new and significant limitations on the city's abilities to regulate small cell facilities within the right-ofways. So you could see these popping up or in our attorney is recommending that, uh, this right, this resolution be passed, cause it's already, the FCC has already said as of April fifteenth, they could do these things. I don't think we want any more stuff in our right-ofway without having some type of, uh, rules and regulations on them. There's already a lot of stuff in the right-ofways.
Put these on your light poles or wherever they want, so typically they go on a top of a light pole someplace and they do several of them in town to make, to create the network, so it could be problematic. Since, uh, our attorneys have many clients, that they're gonna eventually write the ordinance, they're gonna split that, spread that cost out on everybody, so we'll get the ordinance done a lot cheaper than we normally would have because they're, they're recommending all their clients pass this resolution and then adopt an ordinance later. Support.
Most support, any discussion, further discussion? Roll call.
Lees?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Yeah, motion carried. Item number four is consider setting public hearing to amend the city budget for, and that'd be May first.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support?
May fif- it was May fifteenth, wasn't it?
First or fifteenth?
I think the fifteenth.
Actually didn't have a memo in here.
I think, yeah.
It was the fifteenth, cause we, it was two meetings out.
Fifteenth then, I wrote the first out, so, I'm sorry. Is that okay with ever made the motion?
Yes.
Any discussion on it? Roll call.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowder?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Lees?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number five is consider resolution hiring Salvador Cavasos as a firefighter.
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion?
As I noted, he's a senior... As I noted, he's a senior at Westboro High School, we do the same thing like, uh, with Hunter Harstock. If they're in school, they're in school, they don't come up till they're out of school. And Sal's actually pretty active in the school, he's in the play. Uh, with my daughter Shelby and stuff, so he's at play practice, got that going on.
He's a good kid.
Yes, he is.
I've known him for a long time.
So you're dating your daughter?
He's what? No, not. Watch it.
Figure that's why he got on, I guess.
Roll call.
Crowner?
Aye.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Please.
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number six is consider resolution opposing a pro- proposed legislative changes in city finance. I don't know if you guys have been keeping up with this, but, uh, there's, uh. A bill in front of the legislature right now, as a matter of fact, I think they're gonna discuss it here. Today or tomorrow. And the bill numbers changed a couple of times. And, uh, what it does, it's going to limit. Our ability as, it also will affect the county and the cities to where you can't, uh. Have revenue increases more than two percent in your next fiscal year, starting with the twenty tw- twenty, twenty-one. Uh, budgets. Uh, that would definitely, and it also caps the, uh, growth on your reserves. Which we're not there yet anyway, uh, we're at about fifteen, sixteen percent, but it caps the growth on the reserves. And would make you have a reverse referendum if you exceed its spending. On more than two percent, uh, it's a convoluted thing. They've had three or four different versions of it since they've gone around with it. But what it boils down to is. To find people in Des Moines that are there three months out of year are dictating to. You as city councils. How to run your business. Again, over and over again. It's just a, a full-out attack on, on home rule. Telling you that you can do this and this, and it also puts a cap on, on, uh. Employee benefits like insurance. And probably, uh, hypers will be involved in that also. So, I just. A lot of the communities are passing these resolutions just to send them to the state and let their legislature look at them. I know I talked with Mike Norris today, he's contacted. Everyone that is in Southeast Iowa regional planning's region. And, uh, he's gotten some responses back from the legislature saying that, well, we, we know better than. What you people know. You don't, you know, we know that. To me, it's just a flat-out attack. Cause we. We know. What our communities need better than those people that are up there in Des Moines three months out of a year. I don't know what else to add to it, if you read, I don't wanna read the whole resolution, but. Cause it's pretty lengthy, but to me. I think we need to stick to our guns here and. It probably won't do any good, but at least let them know that. We know what they're doing to us.
Kinda like that back though.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's. This is another way around to. To make the residents, cause you know who's gonna end up paying for it, is everybody in the community, it's the taxpayer who'll end up paying for it eventually anyway.
Motion approved.
Support.
Motion with support, any discussion? Roll call.
Raleigh?
Aye.
Please?
Aye.
Waterman?
Aye.
Crowner?
Aye.
Carried. We'll send this off to our representatives.
Even though there's parts of it I agree with. Anyway.
Okay. Any old business? Anybody wishing to address council, the matters we discussed, we've discussed tonight? Entertained, motion adjourned.
Stillness.
Support.
Tell them a favor.
Aye.
Being adjourned, thank you.